Yeah, no, I put the oven holes on and everything, yeah. You like spraying in there or? You uh spray them with sugar water? Just kind of setting them down? And you gotta take the queen bee and put her in there and put a marshmallow in the end, yeah. Sounds like you wanna come and help?
No, I don't, so that's just wanted to tell you guys, I'll make sure.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Call the meeting to order. Uh approve the council agenda, any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh Mayor and Council, we have one correction for you, it's um item eight A. We have an updated uh claims appropriations and contract payments register B, that's on your desk tonight. So the rest agenda is good to go.
And a motion to approve the agenda?
Go move. I'll second.
Motion by Dave, who's second by Chad, to approve the agenda, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh implication, uh Harvest Mission. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark. I'm Pastor Mark McCalip from Harvest Mission, and I just wanna thank you first of all for allowing me to pray for this council. So we uh bow our heads. Father, we just thank you for this council for Hutchinson, we just ask your blessing on each and every member here this evening. We would ask that you would help them always in making decisions to remember who they represent, and we thank you, Lord, for that. We ask for each and every decision that is made this night that you would guide them and grant your wisdom in making those decisions. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city, does anybody have anything tonight?
Well, I will say one thing, I had one of the lawn people who would go around town and, you know, thatch and do all those things stop, and he complimented our city on our Creekside, and what a wonderful service it is for them, because they can just haul out all that excess lawn stuff and leave it there. And he said, it's great, this city's, that's one of the things they really, really like, so kudos to Creekside.
Anything else?
Am I being interrogated?
It's for the TV, so.
Alright, uh citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the.
Dr. Greg. Jan Johnson, two zero one eight four Major Avenue, Hutchinson. And myself and Craig are the site security for the River Song Music Festival that's gonna be happening um coming up here in July fifteenth through the sixteenth, and we're just, I'm just here to kind of give you a quick update and that you know where we're at with it, and um things are going pretty good, it's good. After a two-year hiatus, it's nice to be back and having the music um back at the rivers or at the um Masonic Park. Um I've got, I've got a list of the lineup, I don't know, Mary's, or not Mary, um Betsy said to bring a list of lineup. I don't know if you want a list of the bands, but you can go online and look at that, too. Um we've got everything full, and um so we got everything in order. I sent a letter to the HPT, HPD, um getting their um security to help us um for the twenty-four hours. I got the tax exempt letter, um I got a copy of the liability insurance. And then um Betsy wanted to, wanted you to know that we have paid off eighteen thousand of the thirty-five thousand of our share of the stage, so. There, so.
Is there, how many uh food vendors are gonna be down there, do you know?
Um I think there's gonna be like eight to ten. There was one that was still on the fence last, and we actually have a meeting tonight right after this one, so we'll find out the finalized. But some really, really different stuff this year, so it's gonna be really good, nice variety of food vendors, so.
So what are the prices, Jan, and the dates, you need to give those out.
Prices.
Oh no, I don't know.
Everybody just give us the website to go to.
Exactly, if you volunteer, it's free, so come on down. No, Friday night is gonna be, um I believe Friday night is thirty-five dollars, and Saturday, I think, all day is forty-five. And then kids fourteen and under are free if they come in with parents. Um the dates are July fifteenth and sixteenth, it's a Friday and Saturday. So Friday evening from five to eleven, and Saturday from, opens at eleven, and then it goes till um last band plays at ten-thirty. So music will be done by, by midnight, so.
How much are kids, did we just drop them off to run ferro?
Oh, that's really expensive.
It's like a hundred bucks an hour or something.
I think you just tell them to go look for a change.
Yeah, tell them to look for me. I'll take care of them.
New entrances here, right, Jan?
Oh, yeah, so the entrance is gonna be put back to where it originally was, um which was like across from the main stage. Um we had tried to move it down towards the east, and apparently people didn't like walking that far, so we're gonna move it back. And then it's nice for people in the ticket booth, too, because they can hear the band better and stuff, and.
But even from the highway, they're gonna help?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Absolutely.
Yep, um so there, there's the change, will be coming in on Montana Street and on Les Coober Parkway. Except for the campers, they'll be coming in the other, the Senics. By the Senics opening there, so. Um yeah, apparently that's kind of the route that they want all the new, anybody that's having some kind of a festival or anything like that coming in from that direction, so. So we have, there'll be a little confusion there, um as people are so used to coming in the other way, but we've got, we'll have people scheduled at both places. Directing traffic and stuff, so. Alright, just ask for continued support.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Ready, anybody else? Alrighty, moving on, uh approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and the council workshop of April sixth, twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Pat to approve, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh A is approval of resolution number one five four, five four, resolution to elect the standard allowance under the revenue loss provision of ARPA. Uh B is approval issuing carnival permit to J and K amusement at the Hutchinson Mall from June third through the fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh C is approval of change order number one, letting number six, project number twenty-one dash oh six, water and wastewater SCADA system improvements. Uh D is approval of odyssey travel for Ken Exner to attend National Local Technical Assistance Program Conference in Seattle, Washington from July eighteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh approval, uh E is approval of Conservative Ukraine event in Library Square on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. F is approval of Memorial Day Parade on May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. G is approval of River Song Mu- Music Festival on July fifteenth and sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two in Masonic West River Park. H is approval of Minnesota Pottery Festival on July thirtieth and thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two in Masonic West River Park. I is approval of Party in the Park Event, Library Square on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. J is approval of the Library Board Appointments, reappointment of Catherine Ankrin to April two thousand twenty-five, and appointment of Sue Greep to April of two thousand twenty-five. K is claims appropriation and contract payments register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh it is uh approval of consent agenda number two, claims appropriation and contract payments register B. And under there, actually, there is a check for my company for a windshield, and there's a check for Chad for outdoor motion for the bike fleet, so.
So the other three council members, the pressure's really on you. Really on their court tonight.
Think we need to close session. I would uh make a motion to approve agenda register B. Or eight, register B.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve, register B, with myself and Chad abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh we do have a public hearing, but uh we'll skip down to uh Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Year End Report. Ms. Judy.
Well, you got eighteen minutes, so.
Okay.
So I'm Judy Fleming, the new Hutchinson HRA Executive Director.
Judy, I'm gonna check if that mic is on, that one keeps getting shot, just hit the little green, there you go, so.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So Judy Fleming, the new Hutchinson HRA, um Executive Director. So twenty twenty-one was a year of a lot of changes for the HRA. But I'm gonna go through some of the numbers with you right now. So on a, on a yearly basis, we collect um comparison data, and one of them is our market rate, general occupancy vacancy rate. And as you can see, it is currently uh pretty low, because a healthy vacancy rate is usually around five percent. Another piece that we look at is the rents. And there wasn't a lot of change um with the last time that we uh did the survey for the rents, but um we only do it on an annual basis, and things are always changing in the rental market. I did wanna mention, I don't have it up here, but there was a program that the state had, um kind of a slow program, but it was called Rent Help MN that was supposed to be helping people um that were behind on their rent and their utilities. And the city billing department, water billing department, did see some payments come through that program. So I think a lot of people were staying in their units, and then they didn't, the landlords didn't change their rents too much. One question that we do get a lot is what I have up there, affordable rental housing standard. Um housing should cost no more than thirty percent of the household gross income, but in reality, right now, it's um usually a lot higher than that, that people are spending on their rent. Another piece that we collect is the Hutchinson home resales. So at the end of the year, we contact the McLeod County Assessor's Office, and we calculate the median home resale. So this is kind of interesting, we get the, the counties, which is the two fifteen four, and then we also look at the MLS median, which is the two thirty-five. And what I'm getting from this, and I think you guys probably see this in our market that we have right now, the county number is all the sales, whereas the MLS is where a realtor is involved. And right now, with the sale, the market being so hot, people are selling word of mouth, so. I think that it's kind of interesting to see how these numbers are showing that. Um you guys have kind of heard some of this already, I'm, I'm the last year-end report, you know, so. But uh the construction of the single-family units was about similar to what it was last year with the thirty-five. Um the mortgage rates, I ki- we kind of like to look at those as an indicator. The beginning of twenty-one, it was two point six five, at the end, it was three point one. And just out of curiosity's sake, I looked at it today, and it's at five point five seven. So it is definitely on the rise. Hutchinson had multifamily general occupancy construction in twenty twenty-one. Um Highfield finished two of their buildings that were market rate, and they also, Century Court West Townhomes did a couple buildings, and they're still continuing on.
So Judy, when, when we talk about the multifamily dual units that were built, and we still show our vacancy rate below one percent, and I think dance numbers show, this is just for the council, for the public, we've added, what, two hundred and forty rental units? In the last three to four years, and they're basically what that vacancy rate is saying is that they're all full.
Yep. It is.
So that's why we're even seeing more demand and desire to build additional apartments, is because.
Yeah, they're, they're coming from all over. We um, I just got a phone call a couple weeks ago from somebody, uh manufacturer in Lesser Prairie, and they're bringing in employees from Puerto Rico, so they need to house people. A lot of our, you know, one of my concerns is, is that it's a temporary thing, but this person said that they, you know, they're investing in their employees, so they want them to stay around, so. I don't know, you know, I'm gonna get to this a little bit, but I wanna tell you, we know that there is a need. We just need to have a housing study that supports that, so that we can go to different developers and funding sources to help us get some of these programs and the funding into Hutchinson. So we um, it's, it's a slow process right now because of the delay with the twenty twenty-one census information coming out, twenty twenty information coming out, so, but we are working on that. And as you can see at the bottom, we will definitely need more residential lots, too, for the demand. The foreclosures, this is kind of a, a good number, but I think it's, once again, just a delay, because the sheriff's sales were delayed because of a moratorium over part, during part of the year. But one of the um programs is kind of the equivalent of the Rent Help Program. Minnesota Housing is coming out, and it's like applications are next week, I'll have more on our website. Um it's called HomeHelpMN.org, and this is to help homeowners that are behind on their mortgage payments. Of course, there's criteria you have to follow, but, and meet. The summary of our, this seems like really small, my summary, but it has been a lot of work. Number one, this Perk Towers apartment, so we were create, Perk Towers apartment was created under the Public Housing Program, funded through HUD. And HUD is gradually wanting public housing to switch to this multifamily Section Eight Project Based Rental Assistance Program, because it's a more of a contract where you're set with your funding. And it's better for our organizations as a business to have a contract with a set amount of funding each year instead of having Congress and fluctuations in our funding. So in twenty twenty-one, Perk Towers, we still were getting funding from the Public Housing Program, but we had to follow all of the new multifamily PBRA program criteria. So we were living in two worlds, and I couldn't get an answer from one to the other on how to do it, because this is such a new program, but we're working on it. And we continued here at City Center with our owner occupied rehab programs. Um we have two that are grant programs through the city, and the one is the Live and Work Program, which is a five thousand dollar grant to first-time homebuyers that, of course, buy the home in Hutchinson and then work in Hutchinson. Um you can see the projects that we had there, and then the other really amazing program we have is called, it's another grant program. It's fifty percent up to ten thousand dollars of eligible rehab program, reho- rehab improvements. And as you can see, it's, it's the basic livability things, windows, furnace, boiler, um siding we had. So we had about ten, we had ten people that, or households that we helped through the year with those programs. And then we also, I don't know if you can see, um we also administer some of these other Minnesota housing programs. They're usually like an owner match ti- type, since we have fifty percent of the part of it is grant, sometimes they need help with the other half. This one here was a long time coming, we finally closed out our Small Cities Rental Rehab Program project at Southdale. Um we were awarded under, it says the federal, that was how much we were awarded in grant, the city was awarded grant money, and we met the goal of that. We also had to contribute some revolving funds from paybacks of these small cities programs, so that's the one oh five number. And then the owner had to contribute um thirty percent of the project, and we ended up having change orders, so we had already used up all of our grant money, he had to contribute more, so that's why they have that we exceeded our leverage goals. So all in all, it was over a two, uh eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar project. I wish it was more, but that's what we got. We also like to talk to a realtor to get their predictions, and as you can see, we asked him what he thought the housing market would be in twenty twenty-two, and he said, uh buyer demand will continue to put pressure on already low listing supplies. He believes that the number of overall sales will be lower than last year due to the supply. Um influential factors affecting housing in Hutchinson, supply, which we've talked about, affordability, and the interest rates. Um the last question that we typically ask him is, um what do you think will happen with new construction? As we talked about, it'll be similar as twenty twenty-one. Um but the new construction will be liv- limited by the availability of low costs, low lot, low availability of lots, rising construction costs, and limited workforce in the trades, as Miles mentioned to everybody. These are some of our priorities for twenty twenty-two, Perk Towers. Keep on plugging through this new program at Perk Towers and trying to learn the manuals that are this big. So we have to continue with staff training on all these programs. And I, we've talked about this before, I don't know quite where they're going, and there might be other fo- uh sources of funding for this, but um the legislation has been talking about requiring sprinklers in high-rise re- residential buildings. For our city center operations, continue, will continue administering the city home improvement grant programs and our owner match, other programs through Minnesota Housing. My big thing is, I always hear that, oh, I didn't know you had that program. So marketing, word of mouth, you know, I, we've got a wonderful website, which I'm gonna show you at the end, so. Um refer people to that whenever you can. Identify and determine potential rental rehab, there's always rental rehab, it's just we have to prioritize and see if we can get people interested, owners interested. Also, as we're talking about, um we're gonna, we're working on very slowly at this point, but obtaining the Max Field Comprehensive Housing Study Market Analysis. Once the census data comes out, unless it's stretched out too long, we're gonna um move forward, and hopefully you'll be seeing some numbers, and the data coming out shortly this year. The HRA, when we were working with the high school building, um single-family homes, we had purchased some single-family lots out at Island View, and we're hoping that this housing study will point us in a good direction on what we should do with those. I wanted to show you. There it is. So it's a really easy website to remember, HutchinsonHRA.com, and this is where we have all our different rehab programs listed, there's down arrows, and I'll give you more details. Also, if you're talking to developers or people that are interested, we have our area, um this is where like our year-end report will be, there's a link to some of the housing study information, the apartment guide, that's what we give as a um benefit for them supplying our apartment information that we collect annually. So that's another one, I use that like almost every day, people are like, where can I go? Well, call, go up on our website, and they've got phone numbers, you can call and see if there's anything available. That is it. Do I have any questions?
Judy, on, on Dale Street, those apartment buildings, I mean, they look so much better, you know, from the outside, and I'm sure the inside looks much better, too. Are they gonna do something with the decks that are on there?
I, I was gonna say, don't, don't mention that.
No, I think I asked you that last year.
You did, and a lot of things have changed when I talked to you last year. So the owner match that they had, they had a loan through another, like affordable housing agency, and they had it in their plan to get it done. Well, now they refinanced and got rid of that, so I have been in communication with the owners to ask what their plan is on it, and we're gonna be talking shortly on what their plan is to address it, because it does need to be addressed, so.
Right.
I've, I've called them, they'll, we'll be meeting, hopefully I can tell you shortly that it'll be done. But the costs are, the whole reason why it wasn't, it, it was to add that into the project was way more than what our grant had, so, and we had hoped that they would get it with their owner match piece, but now that the cost went up, they refinanced instead, and helped, there was a fire there, so then they had to have their deductible go towards some of that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you. Want you to go to the public hearing, so.
Alright, we have a public hearing, uh twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two Street Mill and Overlayment Project, uh letting number two, project number twenty-two dash two oh two. There we go. Alright, uh good evening, Mayor and Council, uh like Mayor Forseer mentioned.
Uh, like Mayor Forseer mentioned, we're here to look at uh, study number two, project twenty two dash zero two, which is what we're calling our two thousand and twenty two street mill and overlays. Uh, in the end, we ended up addressing only one roadway, which we'll talk a little bit about here shortly. Uh, that was a decision made by staff, uh, primarily due to cost implications and what's going on out in our world on the oil and fuel front. So with that, we decided to address Century Avenue. Drawing that was in your packet. Uh, started on the west end out here on Dale Street and then continuing east. Uh, up to the, uh, the Boston Street intersection, probably more familiar with the, the northerly landing of that intersection. Which is the entrance into the Runnings parking lot area, drive aisle. Uh, adjacent to the, the south end of the mall in essence. So uh, it's that stretch of roadway that, that was identified per pavement management program. And that, that's primarily driven by the existing pavement condition. Uh, that roadway is at a point in its life cycle where it's starting to deteriorate to the point where the cracks are starting to erode and worsen. Uh, where it's getting to a condition where a mill and overlay approach might not be cost effective anymore. So we want to get out there, administer a mill and overlay before those cracks get worse. Both in, in width and the edges of them and quite frankly, the, the number of them. Uh, other than that, yeah, it's basically milling the edges, uh, and then uh, doing a little bit of spot repair, very little. And then uh, the only real other aspect of the uh, the work is some curb and gutter, concrete curbing replacement. Which is actually pretty limited. And uh, we're not going to be addressing any pad ramps or the, the trail. The trail was addressed from a maintenance standpoint, not too many years ago. So I think we're on sound footing there. And uh, yeah, in a nutshell, that's the uh, scope of the project. I don't know if there's any questions?
Oh, there's no infrastructure?
Nope, no, no sewer and water, uh, storm, storm sewer for that matter. Yep, just uh, basically bituminous blacktop surfacing. Putting a, a new wearing course on the top of it and addressing a few, few curb sections that are, are tipped the wrong way or cracked severely. Uh, we did uh, do, I guess I should say we had attempted to do a uh, our normal uh, neighborhood uh, meeting and uh, it was fairly lightly attended. Uh, we were scum for that matter, so. But uh, we got some information out. Uh, we're going to a lot of detail when we put these notices together. So sometimes it's not surprising, people elect to, to not join us. We also put together this worksheet for the meeting that evening. Which really spells out the, the details with respect to the, the project scope, uh, project cost, funding. Uh, then we get into our assessment policy, uh, what the city pays for. Uh, what the property owner pays for, for the given uh, project type, which in this case is a mill and overlay type project. And then you get down to the bottom here and we just run a quick uh, you know, example. Uh, mill and overlay per the city's adopted fee schedule is currently at thirty dollars a front foot. If you apply it to a typical sixty six foot wide lot, which really isn't the case, obviously. Uh, this stretch of roadway, there's some larger, wider properties, uh, you know, apartment, townhome type properties. Uh, the fairgrounds, the movie theater and others out there. Uh, Runnings for that matter, way on the uh, on the east end and then Walmart on the opposite side of the roadway. But anyways, yeah, thirty dollars a front foot. Um, if you want any more detail about the proposed assessments, they're also included within your packet on, on this uh, assessment worksheet. Um, and, and, and this is revised, so I want to make note of that. So like it noted down here in the corner, you can have it out through this evening. Uh, in the end, we are generating approximately one hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in assessments. So. Which isn't too bad for this type of project. Albeit, we, like I mentioned earlier, we're, we're concerned with the bids we might be seeing uh, in the future when we do take this out to bids. On that note, uh, we may wait a few weeks here. Uh, what we're hearing in the industry is the contracting industry really don't have any idea what, what oil prices are gonna do. So, nor does I think anybody. But uh, what we're hearing in the contracting industry from uh, the bituminous contractors is they are, there might be a window of bidding come mid summer, early mid summer where they're looking to pick up work. So we're hearing that, you know, from our regional bituminous contractors. So what we've done is we've talked to the uh, the school district and with respect to how would this roadway impact their, their busing? You know, if we waited for fall construction, obviously it's gonna be built under traffic. Albeit, they're, we're gonna try to limit the through traffic. Excuse me. We've tried to limit the uh, through traffic and uh, not try, and not impact the busing routes for the school district. But uh, what we're hearing from them is they just basically need to get in off of Dale into the Ravenwood neighborhood. So that's easily achievable, so. What we're looking at is uh, bidding it come mid summer, uh, probably looking at construction September, October. Uh, and in the meantime, we're, we're pushing it through the MINDA municipal state aid review process. And uh, what project costs aren't absorbed by property assessments, we're hoping to utilize municipal state aid funds. So no bonding dollars would be utilized on this project. And that's about it, I believe on my front.
Any questions for Ken?
Really, other than the thirty dollars might be tough to hold too, you're saying with the gas and availability?
Yeah, on that note, I've communicated this to a couple of property owners that I've, I've spoken to prior to this evening. Uh, we are gonna be looking at our assessment policy and the corresponding rates uh, in the upcoming months, over the winter here, fall and winter months. Uh, we do expect these rates to go up. It's been basically a decade since we've, since we've touched them to any degree. We did some marginal, you know, inflationary increases. Oh, spending even a while on that front, probably seven, eight years ago, so. Yeah, I, I would imagine that this thirty dollars a front foot might turn into forty five, fifty dollars. If we're gonna truly reflect what the construction industry has done since we adopted those rates many years ago.
Yeah, and that won't impact this project, but
Nope.
future projects, that's something, Ken's right, we haven't touched those assessment rates in quite some time. And obviously costs are starting to go up and something up to address.
So they might be getting a bargain, is what it was now to have this project administered at this time.
So you're gonna do my speech?
We'll just let that go to gravel.
Any help for Ken? Otherwise I'll open it up for public comment. Uh, anybody wants to address the council, just come forward and state your name and address, please.
For the public, this is your opportunity to address the proposed project along with the assessment cost to your property, to the city council. Come forward, right at the microphone, just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Hope Hager, I'm with Ecumen Oaks and Pines, we are on Century Avenue. Um, and I apologize for missing the meeting last week. Um, but is there gonna be future meetings to discuss logistics about closing the road to um, traffic and?
Yeah, like I mentioned quickly here, it'll be constructed under traffic. You know, local traffic, we're gonna try to minimize the through traffic. You know, the day to day traveling public coming through that roadway. But uh, yeah, well, city staff will work directly with the property owners to get an understanding of your access needs. And uh, you know, that would be very limited timeframes when the road will truly be fully closed, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to close the public hearing. Any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, carried. All right, we do have two resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one, five, four, five, six, resolution ordering improvement and preparation of plans and specifications. And then we have resolution number one, five, four, five, seven. Resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids.
Motion to approve resolution one, five, four, five, six and one, five, four, five, seven.
Second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Ken.
Thanks Ken.
We have no unfinished business, under new business, we have uh, issuing massage license to Touch of Tranquility LLC located out nine oh three highway fifteen south.
Yeah, mayor and council, this is a request for a license. Um, applicant has been completing appropriate, has been, applicant has completed the appropriate application in full and all, all information has been received. And so staff is recommending um, approval of the license.
See, that's what you get for sitting by me.
Yeah, you're rubbing off on me.
Yeah, I know.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the license, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, we have resolution number one, five, four, five, eight. Resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids. The Birch Arena HVAC improvement.
Council, we've got our good friend Pete from Kitygity here to walk us through this, so.
Uh, good evening mayor, members of the council. Uh, yes, we are seeking permission to uh, send the plans and specifications out uh, for the HVAC upgrade project at the Birch Arena. Kind of coincides with uh, the reskidding and the new roof and wall panel project. Uh, basically, uh, what the project envelops is putting a, a ventilation, heated ventilation unit on the main floor, the lower level, which basically goes through the locker rooms. Uh, upstairs, uh, we're planning on replacing on the south half where the spectator is, uh, new infrared heaters. Along with providing a new uh, air handler unit with dehumidification uh, for the upstairs arena, which we'll be able to control some of the humidity as well. Uh, upon approval, what we're planning on doing is uh, sending the ad for the paper. Uh, first advertisement will kind of coincide with everything being finalized here on the eighteenth. Uh, we're looking for a June ninth uh, bid opening. And if things go well, once we get things qualified, we'll be back for June fourteenth, uh, council meeting.
Pete, I hate to throw a curve to you, but I, I understand that there are certain arenas that do have timers that people can put money into to run the infrared heaters more often. Have you heard it? I, I guess Alexandria's got it, I guess. And of course, some of the hockey parents come up to me and said, hey, when you're doing that, you, can you put that in or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, I've, I've seen that as well. And I think in the past, that was a little bit more common. Uh, but over time, especially when you're paying two hundred dollars an hour for ice. Uh, there's an expectation that the building is comfortable, so you can watch your kids play. Uh, so, so I don't know if we want to have a timer in there, we have to put quarters in. But uh, this plan is a little more sophisticated than that. And I, I think we put a lot of effort into the design, so. But yeah, that, that definitely is out there, some rinks are doing that.
Well, yeah, I, I, somebody approached me and I said, I'll bring it up, so there I brought it up, so.
That type of system would probably be less expensive, right? Cause the people are, that's maybe what their thought is? I don't know.
Say again, I'm sorry.
Would that type of system be less expensive than what's being proposed here? I mean, maybe that's what those people were thinking.
I think with, most of those systems were the, the radiant heat. So you, you have your unit heaters or your, your main heating system keep the building at a certain temperature. And if you're watching uh, uh, your, your kids play, then you'd want the radiant heat in addition to the regular heat. So maybe it's forty degrees and if you put some money into it, it bumps it up a little bit.
The, the people watching put the money in.
Yes, I think that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Given the nature of the system, along with the temperature control system, that's kind of coinciding with this. I think it'd be a much tougher uh, operation for the staff to run the facility.
Well, you know, that's, that's older people, like a warm one who are watching our kids, your grandkids play hockey, you know?
Just put on your insulated underwear and you'll be fine, Gary.
I think it's important to remember that with our new, really the new roof and the new walling that's going up. That was the precipitous of having to do this new system. So you're talking about something now that we would have to go back, re-engineer everything. And then do a supposed cost estimate to see.
So does anybody see any equipment issues coming up down the road?
You know, it's what we're planning on doing and uh, we're kind of putting a little bit of a milestone schedule uh, together to go out to bid with this. Uh, we're hoping that we can get all the interior ductwork, the inlets and the outlets for the air installed. Everything kind of put back together, coinciding with the wall and roof panel project for mid September. The units right now, I'm gonna, we're gonna base it on what the lead time is. I do not believe that by the time September rolls around, those units will be available. So we might end up starting a good chunk of the season depending upon the availability. But what I'm hearing right now is twenty to twenty four weeks for the uh, obtaining the equipment that sits outside.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, the good news is the uh, the radiant heat, the overhead corey back heat. I believe that uh, equipment is more readily available. So worst case, we're waiting for the, the heaters on the outside, but we're still able to uh, run the radiant heat to keep the building at a decent temperature.
I remember nineteen seventy six, I watched my classmates outside. People might have to bundle up for a while.
And that's good to remember that the arena first opened in nineteen seventy seven. And we haven't had any major upgrades to that HVAC system since then. We've kind of done little things here and there, so we're finally getting what I think uh, we really need.
And just for the mayor and councils knowledge, this would, you know, obviously we're waiting to see what the bids will come back in. But this would be one of those, and you guys even identified this as a funding option with our, with our ARPA funding, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented, no, no coin operated.
And I will second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
As long as you're up here, Pete.
Perfect.
Might give us a little update on the police.
Sure, uh, activities that are currently going on at, at the police station. Um, if you've been by there, uh, a lot of block, a lot of block and a lot of blocks, so. Uh, Deming's doing a nice job, uh, putting those walls up at the same time, as soon as we get an area available. Uh, Spartan Steel's coming in, putting the bar joists in the roof deck, uh, as things are being completed. Thiel and Heating is starting the roof over the parking garage. I think uh, weather wise, if we have a good week, might be close to drying that in. Uh, Falcon is there working on the plumbing underground, uh, along with piping the roof drains. Uh, for the areas that we do have currently decked. Uh, along with that, we've got Foby Electric uh, there as well, putting boxes in the wall as the nation's building them. Uh, continue to plant in places to finish up with the block. Uh, working on a sample brick panel currently. Uh, you see that little chunk of block wall sitting, uh, just opposite of the trailer. Uh, we're gonna do a brick mockup to ensure that the, the colors in the mortar look good. And Deming will just wrap back her own and start the brick as soon as they get done with all the bearing wall block. And uh, at the same time, then it'll allow us to go back in and start getting prepped. Uh, at the same time, then it'll allow us to go back in and start getting prepped for uh, pouring slabs. And uh, after that, we get a dried-in building, slabs poured, then we can start bringing in the steel stud and drywall team, so.
All righty, sounds good.
Thank you.
Are you moving on, um? Resolution number one, five, four, five, three, resolution calling public hearing on. The intention of issuing general obligation street reconstruction plan bonds.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Um, so with the pavement management program underway. Uh, over in the Linden Park area, we need to start talking about financing to to pay for those improvement costs. And typically, we've used statute four twenty-nine to issue bonds, um, that's what we've done for many years. Um, and it's worked well for us, however, this year, as we've seen in the last couple of years. Our special assessment levels aren't at a at a le- or aren't at a level that'll provide sufficient bonds to pay for the costs. In fact, this year, with Linden Park being city property, we can't assess city property. Uh, our assessments are very low to the point where we're at a shortfall of about one point three million dollars if we went ahead with four twenty-nine bonds. So obviously, we can't do that, so we have to look at statute four seventy-five bonds, which is similar to what we did last year with the police facility. The end result's gonna be similar. We're gonna issue general obligation bonds that are repaid by our tax debt levy. Um, but the process is just a little bit different, and uh, we're here tonight to ask for you to set the the public hearing. For June fourteenth, that's the first step in the process, and at that, at that public hearing, we're gonna. Discuss the five-year capital improvement plan, which will include this project that we're looking to finance, and then we're also gonna look at. Um, gaining your preliminary approval to issue the bonds. After that public hearing, a thirty-day reverse referendum period commences, and that. Period basically gives citizens the chance to submit a petition to place the bonding measure on the ballot. Basically, to um, to have the citizens vote on it rather than just pushing it through. And that petition would have to be signed by at least five percent of the votes cast in the last election. So if no petition is received within that thirty days, then we would be able to issue the bonds, and I'd be looking to come back. In um, July twenty-sixth to sell the bonds at that council meeting. So that's kind of the process. Um, we did go through this with the police station, so it's not new, but um, with rising costs, as Kent has mentioned. Um, and assessments not being adjusted accordingly, I think we may be seeing this. In the future, having to go the four seventy-five bonding process, um, which isn't the end of the world, but we just can't. Uh, the four seventy-five doesn't bond for every project that we do, um. Um, last year, we saw, what's, I'm sorry?
And we all lay the money till the bonds come in?
Correct, correct, but before we start a project, we know we have the capability to bond for it, so we were already knowing. Four seventy-five bonds were the avenue we had to go with, um, but like last year, we saw that we couldn't use four seventy-five bonds for. The Jefferson Street extension, so we had to get creative and use tax abatement bonds, so four seventy-five isn't the solution for everything. That four twenty-nine bonds used to finance us for, so. Uh, ideally, four twenty-nine bonds is where we wanna get to again, but um, with that said though. Um, this year, we're looking to bond approximately two million one hundred and fifty thousand for the pavement management program. And that'll be what we discuss at the public hearing, and then we're also gonna be looking to bond upwards of about five million for the police station. Uh, so a total of a little over seven point one million bonded this year, all subject to the city's debt debt tax levy for repayment. The one nice thing with the police bonds, though, however, is we got all that out of the way last year with the approval from you. To issue up to sixteen million dollars in bonds, so we just have to basically sell the bonds now at at our July twenty-sixth meeting. There's no other work needed from you guys, um, it's all been laid out, so, um, yeah. With that said, I guess our next step is the public hearing in June, and that's what I'm looking for you guys to approve tonight.
And I would, you know, I think this is maybe a good education, um, opportunity for the public. That's part of the reason that we do assessments. Um, is is for the funding source, and there's a requirement for us, and we do the four twenty-nine. Bonding is that, what, at least twenty percent of a project needs to be assessed to the adjacent property owners. And so those are the funding mechanisms that we use. Now, there are options where, like this, where you don't have to do assessments, and then you. Spread it out amongst the entire tax base, but there's other steps that go along with it, and. And generally, we've done the four twenty-nine, but I think that's what we're starting to see is the need for us to really address our. Assessment rates because the costs are now starting to exceed. What rate, what the rates are that we're charging people. Well, in the city, we don't get anything off of the part we own on that century, is not what.
Um, there were some assessments, I believe Kent said, on century.
It just didn't match.
But that that still wouldn't be sufficient for our four twenty-nine. We could have commingled the two projects. And we could have done that, but we still would have had a shortfall under four twenty-nine.
And we've done in the past where we've been behind a couple of projects.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Anything else for?
Motion to approve resolution one, five, four, five, three.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Pass.
Motion to approve one, five, four, five, five.
Second.
And you need to, do you need to give? Any details?
This one, oh, right, I was just gonna give a little background. We do this resolution every year. It's basically to abide by the IRS regulations. Um, they don't want us just simply reimbursing any old costs we want when we receive our bond proceeds. So we need to pass this resolution with the intent to reimburse certain costs that we're already incurring on. The pavement management program that commenced in April, and our declaration of of this intent can be no later than sixty days after. Any expenditure related to that pavement management program, so we have a small window here. Um, just wanted to get this out of the way, so the IRS is happy and we don't get into trouble.
I would like to know. I'd make a motion to approve resolution one, five, four, five, five.
We su- we appreciate your support.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, setting budget workshop.
Ooh, easy Chad, easy. Chad gets excited about the budget workshops.
It is unfortunately, that type of year, we start pla- we start planning for uh.
May twenty-fourth.
For um, twenty twenty-three budgets, um, and so usually this is our kickoff meeting where we kind of use it just to. Kind of a broad approach to get some direction from the council, um, um. So we kind of have some ideas, we begin to prepare the budget where the council has a desire to go with certain things, so. We'd ask that you set that at four o'clock before next regular council meeting.
I'll make a motion to set that meeting. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to set the workshop, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at four P M. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, we have minutes and reports from committees, the board. Uh, Hutchinson E D A, board minutes from March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Chief Gifferson, you have anything for us tonight? Andy, you have anything else?
Nothing else, thanks.
Mary? Mr. Sabore?
Nothing else.
You know, I kind of fell off the wagon here, okay?
We can help you with that.
Yeah, I know.
I don't have anything extra tonight.
Mary, Pat?
Beautiful weather. Let's uh, no, I didn't say it, I drew, no.
Dave?
Pat was wondering why we were at a council meeting, but it was a nice house. Otherwise, I don't have anything to say, go.
Mary, you have anything?
Well, the only thing I have is I still want to personally thank Chief Gifferson for coming to the Today's Women of Hutchinson. And he spoke about our new police station coming up, and it was very informative, and the ladies think he needs to come back and talk more. So, thank you. That's it.
Mary, thanks, Mary. Matt?
Two things for the council, we're talking about budgets, but we also need to talk about elections. Um, so filing opens May seventeenth, so a week from today. Um, and that will be for Mary, Dave, and Gary's positions, um, and so. Um, and that'll be open for two weeks, um, so for May seventeenth to, I think that puts us at May thirty-first. Is the deadline. Remember, it's twenty bucks to to file, and you have to pick your seat and over the mayor's position. Um, and depending on how many files, we'll determine whether or not we have a primary in August. Um, so, just to kind of get that out there, it's already coming up on us here, so it's a week away. And they can call Melissa if anybody has any questions at, is it two, three, four, five, one, five, one?
Five eight seven.
Five eight seven, five, one, five, one. I always get the two, three, four, and five, eight, seven. Uh, so the five, eight, seven, five, one, five, one, if they have questions on filing, so. Um, and then just for the council's knowledge, and I've done this actually last. I think this will be my fourth time now. I am gonna be hosting that, so you want to be an elected official workshop again. Um, for anybody who may be interested in running for office to kind of get, I think, Pat, did you go through, I think Pat went through that, and Dave might have went through that. Um, just kind of give some information on what it would be like, uh, if you run for office, and I'm sure. Pat and Dave can both tell you, I don't even come close to touching on all the details of uh, but I've set that for May twenty-third at six P M. And that will be right here in this, um, in these chambers, so that's Monday, May twenty-third at six P M. They can just email me or call me if they're interested in in coming, um, that's two, three, four, four, two, four, one. Or it's myonic at Hutchinson M N dot gov. Um, which, yeah, we sent out a press release, um, that's out on social media, so.
Want to start?
Six o'clock.
Thank you.
Yep, so it's a good opportunity for people to ask me questions and just learn more about uh. Life as an elected official here in Hutchinson, so, that's it.
Well, I just wanna thank uh, the council and Matt. And uh, Tom, uh, we got a real nice uh, thank you from John Muns for his uh. John Muns Week, so, just to mention that, otherwise, uh, get out and enjoy the weather. Uh, remember, um, with all all the nice weather, we have a lot of kids out riding bikes and. Uh, so, they don't pay attention, they run out in those streets, so please, please be watchful for them, so. Otherwise, that's it.
Make a motion to close the council meeting?
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.